It's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to orders. Let's start off with a pledge of allegiance. You stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. We have a couple of additions to the agenda this evening. Number one will be the contract for a new city manager. Consider the contract for a new city manager. And number two will be consider authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with KDOT for the Peter Pan Intersection Project. With those two additions, have you guys got anything else that you'd like to add this evening?
Not I.
We're good?
No.
We're good? Okay, then I'd entertain a motion, then, that we approve the amended agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. First on there is the new contract for a new city manager. And we are pleased to announce that Craig Whitehead from, he's currently living in American Fork, Utah, will become our new city manager. And he will be on site here on June 8th. Will be his first day. So with that, we need to approve the contract if we can, and then we'll say a few things about Craig. Okay? Is that good? So you guys have had a contract, you've seen that?
Yep.
Okay. Would there be a motion, then, that we approve the contract for Craig to become city manager?
I make a motion that we approve the contract for city manager with Craig Whitehead.
I second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a press release that, I'll read parts of it for you this evening, that gives you a little bit of a background on Craig and what he plans to do when he first comes. He has a plan in place. So, press release, and I'm not going to read all of it because we'll give it to Amanda and to Andy and whoever else wants it here. The independent city commissioners have announced the selection of Craig Whitehead of American Fork, Utah, as a new city manager. He will assume his position June 8th. The commissioners, obviously, we unanimously approved his appointment, and we'd like to note that Craig's extensive experience in long-range planning and budgeting, as long as demonstrated excellent communication skills, were factors in the decision. The Whitehead was among three finalists that we interviewed in late April, and after much deliberation, we agreed that Craig would be the one that would lead us to where we think we need to go as far as moving a community forward. Craig has stated that even before I came for a visit, I looked at a lot of information about Independence. One of the things that piqued my interest in applying for the job was when Mayor Gary Hogsett welcomed on the city's website, which spoke about the spirit of the community and why he and his wife decided to move here, a real spirit of community, pride, and volunteerism. I also was impressed with how the commissioner spoke about the city. He says, "I'm excited to join the City of Independence team. All the staff I've met so far have been great, and I look forward to working with them for the betterment of the community." Craig's priorities, early priorities, will include establishing the 2017-18, actually, it'll be the '18, city budget and a capital program, and working with Citizens Infrastructure Committee to help outline the futures for City Hall and other capital projects. To sum up my leadership style in one word, I would call it, or would say it, would be participative, he said. "I believe in a team decision-making and gaining consensus. I believe in communicating, leading by example, developing and empowering employees, celebrating our successes, having fun, offering recognition and appreciation." Craig has been in American Fork, and he's been in several other places, that Peoria, Illinois, Galesburg, Illinois, Sioux City, Iowa, Newport, Vermont, and Cana, how do you say that one? Canada, Ega, New York. Graduated from Brigham Young University in Utah, bachelor's degree in political science, and a master's of public administration, which was one of the criteria that we had. Whitehead will relocate to Independence with his wife Sandy and daughter Rachel, and they're looking forward to engaging the community. With that, commissioners, I would entertain any other comments that you guys would like to add?
Go ahead.
When we got the three candidates, the final three, we were hoping we could blend all of them together into one. Each of them had such good qualities that it was hard to narrow it down to one. As we discussed and looked at what we saw Independence needed, we shared our ideas, and we focused in on Craig, that the way he outlined using a master plan, evaluating it, involving it in the budget, and communication skills, you know, it was something that we felt for where we were in Independence, just like Mayor Meyer said, that it's the direction we felt the city was to go, and we're, you know, personally, I'm excited. I felt the same excitement from the other two commissioners, that this is a spark that we've been looking for, and we're really anxious to get Craig in the office and start going forward.
Yeah, I agree with everything both of you have said. We had three good candidates, but Craig was the most experienced by far. He's been, as Fred just read, he's been in five states, I think, and six different cities, really, really an experienced city manager. And he's just very enthusiastic about the city. He, when he came, he'd done so much research on the city, it seemed like he already knew half the city staff by name and face. And they're just very excited to be here, and as the other two commissioners both said, he is a consensus builder and very transparent, so we think he'll be just a great choice. And all three of us are very, very excited about that.
We are excited, and one of the things that I just visited with him about yesterday was he has a 100-day transition plan. And that transition plan is, involves reaching out to each city employee and communicating with them on a personal one-on-one basis as much as he can, and really starting to attack the team-building approach, which we all three felt was very important for the community and for the city as we move forward. So, we're excited, and it's been a long process, but it's all come to fruition, and I hope that everybody will open their hearts and open their minds and welcome Craig with, to the community as we start to move forward. And, you know, we've taken a few hits here, folks, but hits are over, it's time to move forward. So, I'm excited. Okay. Yay! We're happy about that. Okay, next is the, to consider the authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with KDOT for the Peter Pan Intersection Project. Kelly?
This is the, all these different projects require an agreement with KDOT, and so this is the one for the Peter Pan Intersection Project. I did get an update. KDOT is actually doing the bidding for this project, and they'll let it on June 21st at 1:30. It's kind of unique. You can either be there, you can listen by telephone, or it's kind of a different process. They'll release the bid tab approximately 30 days later, and then we'll bring it back to the commission, because both the commission and KDOT both have to award the bids, so...
Okay. All right, questions?
This is formality, really, isn't it, as far as...
Yeah, we always have to sign an agreement, it's basically saying, you know, everybody's going to do what they agreed to do, so...
So, the bid dates June 21st?
Yes.
Then award the contract about 30 days later?
Yeah, they said they'd get the bid tabs out, and then they have the pre-bid conference about the same time, and they think, they estimate it's going to be about a six-month project.
So, start of construction, August, September?
Potentially. Sometime after that, 30 days after they award the bid, depends on, a lot of that sometimes depends on the contractor and whatever else they may be already doing, too, sometimes.
Okay. Any other comments? No? I'm good. Okay, then I'd entertain a motion, then, that we enter into agreement with, actually, KDOT to bid the projects for us that we previously discussed, right?
Well, it's an agreement for the project.
For the projects, okay.
I'll move that we authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with KDOT for the Peter Pan Intersection Project.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Appointments, next. Downtown Art and Culture Advisory Board, we have not received any applications for that yet, so if, you know, if anybody that would be interested in that, we've extended the deadline to June 1st. We also have a park board opening, which will be one of them, and applications for it will be due June 1st. Those applications are online on the city website. Okay. All right, the consent agenda. What's your pleasure on the consent agenda?
I'm good.
Good.
You're good? Entertaining a motion, then, that we approve the consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, and F, as presented.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have introductions, and I think Jared's going to do the first one for us.
Gentlemen, how are you? I'd like to introduce our newest officer that just graduated from KLETIC in April. His name is Shane Collins. He came to us from, well, he grew up in Florida and lived in South Carolina before he moved to Independence with his family. He's an Army veteran, having served in Afghanistan, and he wanted to be in law enforcement for several years, so he took the dive with us, and we're thrilled to have him. And he has a wife and two young boys. We're very grateful to have him serve in our community. He had to endure a thorough background and interview process, as well as complete a 14-week basic police officer course at the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center in Yoder, Kansas. Do you guys know where Yoder is?
They have a big restaurant there that has very good pie.
You do know where Yoder is? Okay. Just south of Hutch. So, appreciate it if you guys would join me in welcoming Shane to our department, and I hope he has a long and rewarding career of professional service and lifelong learning with us.
Stand up.
And just to kind of put things in perspective about Shane, we are now on our, beginning our third round of hiring to fill the open vacancies that we have, because in the first two rounds, we haven't been able to select a candidate successfully. So, it's not an easy process, but we're not going to back off of it just to fill positions. So, we're really excited to have qualified personnel here to serve the community, so thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, Shane.
Welcome to the city and welcome to city staff. We're pleased to have you. Okay. All right, next, we have Connor Cushing.
Chase.
Chase, I'm sorry. Connor's his brother.
Chase, you want to come up?
Come on up. There we go.
Chase Cushing is interning here at the city this summer. Chase is an urban planning student at Brigham Young University in Provo, Utah. Upon graduating in December 2017, he will pursue a dual master's degree in planning and real estate development at the University of Arizona in Tucson. Chase is a 2011 graduate of Independence High School. Chase served a church mission in Brazil from 2012 to 2014. Chase and his wife are enjoying spending time with family and old friends in Independence this summer, so I'd like to welcome Chase.
Chase. Yeah. Don't be bashful, Chase, you can...
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that City Manager Whitehead's a fellow BYU grad.
There you go. I was going to mention that.
Pretty glad to have another cougar around, so, yeah. And I'm glad to be here in the city. It's been a, it's a pleasure to be here, so, thank you.
I heard that we're going to have you crawl through all the storm drains to check them out.
Is that right?
Oh, I already did that.
I did.
I haven't told him that yet.
He's in shape. He could do it and get by with it. He could get down there and get backed up.
Get him on the Hungry Hungry Hippo team.
There you go. We have proxies.
Welcome, and I hope you have a great summer.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items for commission action. Item H is consider a proclamation declaring May 14th through 20th, 2017, Police Week. And, just to let you know that I have heard that, don't exactly like reading all the proclamation because it gets a little bit long, so I'll just read a little portion of this one, and it says that "It is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of the police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against the deception and the weak against the oppression and intimidation." So, there's, it's a good one for the proclamation for our protection staff here, our police department, and so with that, then, I'd entertain a motion that we proclaim the 14th through the 20th as Police Week.
I make a motion that we declare May 14th through the 20th, 2017, as Police Week.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, the next one on aye is to consider a proclamation declaring May 21st through 27th as EMS Week, and this is for our EMS staff. And they provide quality emergency care, which dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. And the, these people concern, are consisting of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical providers. So with that, I'd make a motion, then, that we proclaim May 21st through 27th as EMS Week. Would you be second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. And we do thank all these first responders and our safety, all of our safety and first responder personnel for what they do for us. I know that, this morning, I know that there was a bunch of them that were headed north, and it was raining, and that was a tough deal, this morning, I'm sure. Okay. Item J, consider a request from R-Turn to beautify the railroad trestle on North Penn Avenue. And I think we have some people here from the R-Turn group. Okay?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
As most of you know, we've talked to a majority of you about this project before, but the R-Turn group, when it first met to talk about different projects that they would like to tackle around Independence, one of the ideas came up to wrap the bridge, as you see, in sort of a welcome-to-independence kind of theme. That was something a lot of us were interested in tackling, and we decided to continue on with it and gather a group of people that had experience in different, various areas with getting this completed. We decided to move past the initial idea of wrapping the trestle in a vinyl material because it didn't have a great amount of longevity, and also, it wasn't going to be doable with the rough, the rough material that we would be working with. There's straight seams on it that were very deep, it wasn't going to work out. We moved on to talking with Kelleher Outdoor Advertising of Bartlesville. They're actually the only company that wanted to talk to us about it. They decided with us that doing a billboard-like structure on the outside of the bridge would be the best way to do what we were trying to accomplish. We decided instead of just doing one side, also, that we wanted to go ahead and tackle both sides while we were doing a project like this. One side is going to be a welcome-to-independence, like a gateway into the city, and the other side's going to be directing people towards the park and zoo. And for the rest of this, I'm going to move on to Amy Taylor.
Kelly, do you have the, yeah, there we can, go ahead. We've developed a plan to mount billboards to the north and south sides of the overpass, and these would be welded angle iron structure. They would have a plywood face that would then would be mounted to that angle iron structure, and then a vinyl face would then be stretched over that plywood, and it's just like the billboards you see along the highway. It would have a series of straps and ratchets that would tighten that face over the plywood structure. The vinyl faces are expected to last about two years, and then they could be replaced with a new design. I think we had a picture of us, of the size of the structure at some point.
The side?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a picture of the side. You can see, it's just angle iron, it mounts directly into the steel, bolts in there, it will be very secure. Kelleher Outdoor, Dan Kelleher is also an architect, so he is very well knows what to do with this sort of thing, so we're lucky that he has the knowledge about the outdoor advertising, as well as the knowledge to put this kind of a structure together. So we were lucky to find someone that had knowledge about both areas. Each billboard, they're kind of a strange shape because the, we wanted to fill the space as best we could. It's going to be four feet, six, four feet, six inches high by 53 feet wide, so it's a very wide space, but not very tall. So it's going to be a big space, and if you go to the next slide, you can see the north side of the overpass will feature design welcoming Independence, people to Independence. It will be red, white, and blue. This is just an example of what we are going to do. This isn't the exact design. We're actually going to have a graphic artist do some drawings for the Neo Walla, the Inch Theater, or some type of theater graphic, maybe an Elk City Reservoir graphic, Little House on the Prairie graphic. At a tourism grant meeting, we had some other ideas were brought about, about maybe shopping and also dining, so those may be added into the mix as well. They've also brought up maybe a website or some sort of call-to-action to help promote people to stay in Independence, maybe something along the lines of shop, dine, stay, something along those lines. On the south side of the overpass, we're going to have, it's basically going to be a large billboard advertising Riverside Park and Ralph Mitchell Zoo, and that will be kind of the same theme. It will also have some illustrations featuring the park, animals on one side, sports and activities on the other, so football, golf, tennis on the other. And then in the middle, we're going to feature a large drawing of the shelter house and the fountain, kind of as the centerpiece. And I think I'm going to let Mike O'Malley take over from here. He's going to tell us a little bit about some of the money that's already been raised, about the different contractors in town that we've worked with that have generously donated their time. We've already got a lot of interest, and a lot of the funds have already been pledged for those projects, so I'm going to let Mike take over, and he can tell you about that.
Thank you. And I might grab these.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, as far as the companies that we've been working with, WACCO here is the owner of the bridge, which makes it, makes it quite nice from the requirements from a state level to work with. The state will still be involved, and I got a form that we'll be discussing here in shortly, but WACCO is, has been really gracious in welcoming us with this project. Rick Baden's a local resident, former resident from here, and he happens to be the CEO over there, so once we got in contact with Rick, we not only got the approval, but a $2,500 initial donation, or pledge to go towards the project if we take it to completion. As far as working with local contractors, I mean, we definitely want to keep it as local as possible. Clinton Volz, went and spoke with him. He says it's not the type of work that he's done in the past, but he was quick to jump on board and say, "I'd sure like to do that, I like that project." Jason Etchison is the project painter that we've contract, at least spoke with and would plan on contracting with. I talked to he and his wife one day and told them about what we're looking to do, and both, again, immediately said, "I'm interested in that project, I think that'd be great." We'll do it at a cost, because we see value in what that adds to the community, and to be truthful, the bid came in right at half of what the next competing bid was, so, you know, there was no profit motive there in mind on their part with this. You know, as I mentioned, the overpass will fall under the jurisdiction of the City of Independence, and it's not going to require any KDOT approval outside of the right-of-way form that we'll talk about here shortly, because it's the WACCO bridge. The total cost for the R-Turn overpass project, we've got it right now, I estimate it $25,000 to $30,000. And as we move deeper into the project, there's always some unintended 20% overruns, things like that, but we really feel like that's pretty close to what it'll be. And with regards to funding, I mean, we've already received roughly half of the money in pledges, so we're off to a good start with that project if we're able to take it through to completion. It's been approved by the park board, it's set to go before four paws on April 7th. Well, we've done that. We've done that, I'll move past this one.
Pass light out.
That's right. The project's been, received all the necessary approval for public fundraising campaign on the beginning, and we're wanting to get all the approvals in place before we get the city, as far as the community, I should say, you know, involved with any additional fundraising. So, you know, that's part of this process tonight, is, again, this form that we're looking to sign.
I have people walking in my office, though, asking me, "Where can I, how can I get involved, how can I..."
And so they would be able to access the community foundation, so, to access the 501(c)(3) designation, correct?
That's the plan, is to take it through that. And, again, there's some local businesses that already shown some interest in this. As Amy's saying, there's all kinds of people now that we've presented to First Friday, it's been in the paper, people start, you know, it's no longer kind of this project that we've been talking about privately, but I've yet to find anybody that doesn't get excited when they see the before picture of the bridge, and then the after picture of what it could look like when this is completed. So, you know, that's kind of in summary what plans we've had up to the point, up to this point. The form, though, that we do need, the city, not only, we're looking for your endorsement, you know, for the project, but also the permission to move forward with that project. And KDOT does have a right-of-way, use of right-of-way form, that, I don't know if it's in your packets, if not, I brought copies, and I can sure pass those out if you'd like.
I didn't remember seeing that.
It's a Form 304 form. Do you have it?
Well, I did put it in there because we talked to Jeff, and he basically said that the city didn't need to be the petitioner on it, and then the right-of-way agreements, we do that internally with staff, not on the commission level, and the right-of-way agreements with KDOT.
Okay.
That's why it's not in your package.
Okay. Okay.
I'll let Mike finish. We may need to petition.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that changed, sorry. Okay.
Yes, and I can present, I can kind of give you a brief summary. As we went through this form and looked at the insurance requirements, and I started working with local, we'll vote Bo Dennis here in town, just to see what the insurance requirements was, and worked with Marcus Leck, part of the discussion came back to, well, if the city was to endorse and will be one of the petitioners on the right-of-way, the cost of the insurance would already be covered, with the exception, I think it's $50, and two different, to add on the attachments to cover it, because of the existing coverage that the city already has. So, I do have two different forms that I can leave with you, and you can consider. One has just R-Turn as the petitioner, which would be separate. A secondary one is one that has R-Turn and the City of Independence as petitioners for this project. That, from my understanding, outside of traffic flow, is the only involvement that KDOT would have, from talking with Marcus Leck and working with him up to this point with regards to the traffic flow, whenever we do that.
With traffic flow, you're talking about, while they're working on the overpass?
Correct.
Then you'd have to divert traffic, is that correct?
That's correct.
And... And so I'm assuming we'd work with Jerry, I'm assuming?
As a matter of fact, yes. I've had a conversation with, with the police chief, and we've kind of started outlining what-if scenarios of traffic flow. Talked to KDOT a little bit as well. Ideally, we'd like to think we can divert the traffic down to two lanes, work on half of it, and not stop the flow of traffic on the days that they'd be sandblasting and prepping and painting the overpass. But when it does come to the point in which we're putting the signage up, you know, I, we're going to have to see as we go through this project, but there is a chance we'd have to divert traffic around that. And so we're in the process of trying to figure out what, what bypass would be in place for that time period when 75 would be closed down for that.
Okay. All right.
Other questions from?
I have questions.
Sure.
The paint removal process, I remember we talked about there being lead-based paint, so they have to build a enclosure around it as they sandblast?
Yes.
Any idea how long that takes?
And he is certified with lead-based paint removal. That was one of the requirements when we're putting the bids out for that. But no, they talked about there being a paint, or a tent structure, and having it, be able to capture that and vacuum up the paint and dispose of it properly.
Is this just a couple-day operation, do you know?
You know, I don't know. I don't have a good answer for you at this moment, because, you know, we've just kind of been putting the bids together, organizing the plan. But now that we're getting closer to execution, that's where we're starting to, to really get a better understanding of, how do you consolidate that, get your timeline put together so it doesn't impede traffic for the city and for the state as they run through? But I don't, I don't have a great answer for you. You know, Dan Kelleher thought his crew could move pretty quickly, and I think they're used to those types of projects.
They'll have all of their stuff built and just ready to install.
Right.
The plants will have to go fast. They'll have all their stuff welded up, and then Kelleher just has to come and put the plywood on and then put the face on.
And I would say that...
Can you back it up a couple slides?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Mike.
No, that's fine. I'd say Etchison and Clinton Volz would work together, they'd time that out so that, you know, they're, when we're closing down those lanes, they'd just be utilizing...
Right there.
...that together.
I'm also curious, you mentioned in here, sandblasting the concrete on the side.
Yes.
Is that going to be just painted white or not painted?
You know, that kind of has been part of this as this develops, and as we've had different discussions, different groups. Initially, we just said, "Well, let's just paint the uprights and, you know, the steel." And then it turned to, "Well, what would it cost to add the concrete facade?"
Right.
You know, and roughly $3,500 is that portion to have that painted. Now, the prep side, we haven't got a bid, because as you go look at it, there is some work that needs to be done on the masonry side of it.
It's a little bit beat up.
I think funds availability, and you know, if funds are available, that's sure something we want to try to do, because it's entirely...
I, I love the project, so don't misinterpret my questions as being like, "I'm against this," because I absolutely love this from the moment I heard about it. But I'm also wondering about the railing up there. Is there any plan for that? It's kind of ugly, too.
At this point, we've not...
Okay.
Received any bids or looked at that, and I don't disagree. You know, that's, questions come up in the past, as, "Well, what about..."
Could we wrap it, or?
"Could we do something with it?" So, you know, I, I'm optimistic, always am, about everything, but when it comes to the fundraising, I'd like to think that we'll, we'll find the other funds and, and then probably build into that, depending on how quickly or how much we raise, you know, the upgrades, if you would, doing the railing and doing some additional components if the funds are there.
Yeah, good. I have no doubt. It would be a great, a great success. Final question?
Sure.
I promise. So, down the road, a year or two, is this, I know, R-Turn is not a formal structured group with bylaws and all that, so is this going to be turned over to the Pride Committee or Main Street, or who, who down the road will be responsible for deciding when to change the banner and what the banner's going to be? Have we talked about that at all?
No, honesty, I, I don't know. I have a great answer for you at this point.
Okay, I just wanted to...
As we kind of move forward, and it's went from different people that's had the idea and talked about it. But I don't think it'd be hard to have any particular group continue to take on...
No, I don't think so.
...this and continue it. Like Amy, you probably talked about it, maybe every two to three years, we would need to replace the vinyl.
The vinyl will deteriorate in two years. It may start to fade a little bit, but it's not, and the north side is going to last longer than the south side because of the exposure, so...
But it'd be a nice option, if we wanted to, to put up a banner on the north side to announce an upcoming, you know, Neowalla or something. So we could do it more often if we wanted to. I mean, obviously, it costs money, but...
It does cost money.
Yeah, okay.
And we have gotten estimates, we do have estimates for costs to replace and...
Great.
For replacing the vinyl, the cost of the vinyl installation. We are, you know, we do have that under...
Wonderful. I think it's a fabulous idea. I love it.
Well, that was kind of my question, too, on longevity, but also then on ownership by the city requesting for the right-of-way. We're not accepting ownership of the sign, are we? We're just requesting access to use the right-of-way?
Yeah, I mean, WACCO owns the overpass.
But the sign?
The sign is on WACCO's property.
Yeah.
I mean, once you put it up there, I don't know what the arrangement is with WACCO, if there's just verbal agreement or a written agreement on that.
I would say that'd be something we'd want to make sure we have some clarity on. I mean, up to this point, it's just been verbal, but as we move forward, you know, formalizing the different documents, making sure who's responsible for what, I think that's something we'd sure address if we crossed that bridge with this, too.
Kind of what I, I'd see, it goes with the, who's going to replace it, who's going to maintain it. I mean, it's going to be such an impact coming in and improving the appearance as you enter the town. I think now's the time to look down the road, too, and address your replacement and who's going to be responsible for changing out the plywood and, and you know, just those little details that we're guaranteed that 10 years, we still have that impact that we're anticipating to have from this, and, you know, the, the painting is going to be such an improvement alone, let alone the, the opportunity to advertise the amenities of the town and, you know, give that first impact that, "Hey, there is something different here."
There may need to be a trust or a maintenance funds that have to maintain it.
Yeah, yeah, great.
The only other thing I might add is, from a traffic flow standpoint, you know, ideally, the project would be best served to do it when school's not in session. If it is such that the detour does take us by, you know, at least the middle school, potentially the high school. I mean, there's been different scenarios that's been discussed, but, you know, we're sure looking to kind of move forward as quickly as possible. And ideally, the summer months works best for painting and other things as well, so... Give you a sense of kind of at least the timeline, that we're hopeful that if we can cross all the hurdles and clear those and get the funds in place.
And it ever stops raining, and if it ever stops, that will happen, but...
There might be a vote, but not...
Yeah, it looks like with some of your sequencing, though, you're going to have to do some sandblasting to weld the brackets up initially, so there could be a couple different times you need to detour.
With the spray, you know, with that, you'll have to be careful of overspray...
Right.
...for wind, all those types of issues that come up, yeah.
It, that will be the biggest challenge, I think, is just trying to minimize any of the impact that that might have while the sandblasting and the painting is taking place, so... Any other questions?
It's going to be, it's going to be nice.
Can you have the money raised by tomorrow, Mike?
We're getting there.
These two guys want to make generous donations.
Perfect, I heard him say it. See you in the morning then.
So with this, we can, Jeff, you need to look over those agreements?
I, I went to the work. It's a standard KDOT form, and it just depends on if the city's going to be a petitioner or not. The reason Kelly and I are looking at each other is that, at first, we didn't think the city needed to be a petitioner, but just developed today that if the city is a petitioner, the city's, there's always an insurance requirement in a KDOT form. The city already has the insurance. If they, and KDOT wants to be additionally insured, and I think Bo quoted $50 or something like that.
I think there was $50 twice.
Yeah, about $100 versus the potential, and he was working on some quotes for the insurance, if it was standalone insurance that didn't fall into the city's. They have a firm quote, but $15,000 to $2,500, I guess, would be the rate. So there's the benefit of having the city be an additional petitioner just for this right-of-way, if the insurance did fall into the existing policies with a couple additions, so...
Okay. All right. So technically, tonight, then, we're approving the concept and the project, Sam?
Well, and also, if you're wanting to advertise Neowalla, you may want to initiate a text amendment, which we could take to the planning commission to change the wording, because currently banners can only be advertising civic functions of nonprofit groups, and Neowalla is a for-profit group. So, we could modify that with some language to allow for the Neowalla, but technically, it, it does not meet that criteria. But the commission could initiate the text amendment, and then we'd take the planning commission and come back to you guys for final approval.
Is this really a banner?
Excuse me?
Is this really a banner?
Yes, Chris, if you, if you classify it as a billboard, it has to be 1,000 feet from a residential area and another billboard, and you can't meet either of those requirements.
So it's best to qualify.
So that's why, you want it, trust me, you want it to be a banner.
We'll call it a banner.
And a banner does hang over street right-of-way specifically, so that's, that's why I'm defining it as that, that's, so...
But you're not planning to do Neowalla right-of-way, so we could do that anytime, too?
Yes, but it'll take a couple months to get it, to get, go through the approval process.
Gotcha. Amy, what were you going to say?
It's not going to say Neowalla on it at this point.
Right, so, right.
It'll have a representation. It'll have a drawing on it, but it's not going to say the word Neowalla on it, so I don't...
We'd have to change that at some point, maybe, if we're, if we're going to mention Neowalla by name.
It just might be a good idea, just so that, if they want to do it, you're not having to wait two months to get approval for it to get done. We might as well go ahead and do it.
I'm good with it.
I'd be good with that, too.
So we need more than one motion here?
Yeah. So we need a, a motion then for, let's, let's take it in order that we just had it.
Well, on the, on the text amendment, do we need it broad enough so that we can include other not-for-profit or...
What I had is to allow an exception for community celebrations that are officially endorsed by the city.
Love it.
Okay, so that covers more than Neowalla?
So that could, that could be like the German Fest?
Yeah, if you guys officially endorse it with a proclamation or resolution like you do for Neowalla, then that's why I did it that way, so that you'd have some flexibility.
That sounds great.
Yeah, that does sound good. Okay, so, let's take it, we were talking about the text amendment, let's, would there be a motion then that we authorize staff to pursue a text amendment, to go through the process for, what would you call that, Kelly?
To allow an exception for community celebrations that are officially endorsed by the city, and this will be as part of the banner definition in the sign.
Okay, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor then? Any other coming? Okay. All those in favor then signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Then next, we're approve the banner?
Well, for the city to be a petitioner on the form, right, Jeff?
Okay.
Yes.
So then, that would be, the motion then would be that the city become a petitioner with KDOT?
For the right-of-way.
For the right-of-way, okay?
The petitioners would be R-Turn and the city.
And, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I'd make that motion then, as well.
You got that, Mike?
We don't have to repeat it?
Yeah.
You got it, Mike?
I'll second.
Then if you could send those to us tomorrow, the forms?
I'll be in Manhattan tomorrow.
Oh, that's right.
I made that motion, yeah. And then, would there be a second?
I seconded it.
Okay. All right, then, again, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And there we go. We're ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, yeah. Did you get somebody else coming, Michael? Okay. All right. Item K then is to consider a request from the Leadership Class of 2017, and R-Turn again to hold a grand opening celebration of the dog park known as Wolfstock on June 10th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 700 North Park. Okay?
We also may need to use the space across from the dog park. We're not sure yet. They're looking into the electricity. We're trying to have some bands come in, and so we may need to be across the street, so that's what we're here to ask. Do you have any questions for us?
I like the T-shirt.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, that's nice.
I saw that. Where'd you get that at?
It's on sale, actually.
Put it down so they can see the print.
Wolfstock.
There you go. On sale now.
At, where at, where can you buy it?
You can talk to any of the Leadership Independence people, so we're going to be selling them at the library and Main Street and Rock, did we say? There was one other place?
I'm not sure.
I can't remember the other third one.
I did the chamber as well.
Oh, in the chamber.
And Brian's the official model for the...
So this is a fundraiser for the dog park.
Okay, so this is, that was my question, this is a fundraiser, and...
The Leadership Independence took on the task of doing a fundraiser for R-Turn for the dog park.
Okay. All right. Questions from the commissioners?
Sounds like great fun.
Yeah. Lou, you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. And then I'd entertain a motion then to allow the Leadership Class of 2017 and R-Turn to hold a grand opening celebration for the dog park on June 10th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Was that the motion?
That was the motion.
I'll second.
It's easier to do that, that way, okay? Any further discussion then? All right, all those then in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we're excited to get that one going, too.
Thank you so much.
Nice addition to the city.
Sounds great.
Okay. All right. Item L, consider a request from the Pride Committee to beautify the northwest corner of Penn Avenue and Chestnut Street. Lisa?
Oh, wow.
All right.
The photo's a little dated, isn't it?
Oh. Well, first, I just want to say thank you for supporting the R-Turn project and the Leadership Class project. I wish I could say the chamber could take credit for those projects, but we can't. But what's cool about it is all of the individuals in the community that have rallied around and made organizations and, and groups like R-Turn and the Leadership Class taking on projects to help R-Turn finish the race on the dog park, and then the R-Turn group that has taken on the, or the R-Turn initiative that's taken on the train trestle. on the, or the R-Turne initiative that's taken on the train trestle. I think all, both of those things will really enhance the quality of life in our community. And I know that, Mike didn't mention it, but the Tourism Committee did grant funds for the train trestle to help with that because we spend a lot of money promoting our community through lots of forms of advertising, whether it be print advertising, magazines, and many times it's been billboards in the past, which are incredibly expensive, and many times those billboards are outside of the community when someone's not even thinking about coming to our community. And the look and the feel of this banner right in the heart of downtown, when you're in the town that is publicizing all of the activities, plays right into all of the tourism gems that we have in our community. So with that, thank you for supporting those two things. So I'm asking your support for a third. When I came to the chamber, I'm in my seventh year now, and it was already in form, the Pride Committee was already formed and working towards lots of things that would beautify and make our community nicer and more attractive to people that are coming to our community and for those of us who already live in our community. And there, I guess what I'm saying is, is we have a lot of projects that we look at as valuable to our community. And some of the projects that we've done, just to give you kind of a history of the Pride Committee, is we are the ones who coordinate and work to pull off the community cleanup every fall in October with the help of all the city staff that's down there. We form all the volunteers that go down and help to help all of us who come down and unload all of our things at the community cleanup. We also coordinate all of the volunteerism for the Community Recycling Day that takes place every single month on the first Saturday of the month. We are also the ones who started the Tree City designation that has now resulted in a tree board, as you know, and they're responsible for Tree City designation for Independence, the Arbor Day that they just had, that would fall underneath the community orchards that we have in our community. And lastly, they champion the Love Independence efforts as well. So with that, we decided that when we, when we looked at the property, the former Town and Country location, that, I don't even know what I'm looking at up there, is it on that picture?
That's the Town and Country building.
Okay, good. Okay, so...
Or the cars in the building.
Okay, oh yes, now I see, okay, yes. The aerial shot of the car lot, okay. So after the removal of the former Town and Country building, the Pride Committee at one of our meetings sat around and really brainstormed about what could we do to beautify that piece of land in our community. Of course, we have no control over that, we have no jurisdiction over that, but we sat around and just, like I said, just brainstormed, what could we do? Because it's, it's kind of in the heart of the city, it's at one of the entrances into our downtown, it's, when I check the traffic count on a daily basis, 5,300 people go by there, and it's a, it's a great spot to really showcase our community. We talked about a lot of different things, would it be great for a park? Would people want to go over there and sit and enjoy the afternoon? Probably not. There's a lot of truck traffic, truck traffic that goes by there. Would they want to take their children over there? Probably not. It's not incredibly safe to just run across the street. I mean, it is safe to get there, to cross at the crosswalk, but there's a lot of lanes of traffic right there and we didn't feel like that it was something that we wanted to promote, a lot of physical activity over at that area. However, we wanted to make it kind of a showcase and something that would catch everyone's eye as they were passing by on Highway 75 right there. So we talked about landscaping, lots of landscaping ideas. We had Twyla come from TLC and she gave us some drawings that I'll show you in just a little bit of some ideas of things that we could do there. Some were very elaborate, some were very basic. We talked to Barb Burskins with the Parks Department and we definitely wanted her on board because this would fall under her responsibility with, you know, an additional park in the community. And she emailed me today that between the Parks Department and the Streets Department that they will be maintaining that, that piece of property and supports what I'm about to ask you for support for. So we looked at landscaping, our ultimate goal is to really make sure that that is low maintenance, it can't be no maintenance, but low maintenance. We also thought about, wouldn't it be cool if we put a fountain on that property? Maybe a bronze fountain that would have, you know, that bronze component to it that would tie right in with all of the bronze sculptures. After we talked to people regarding fountains, they said, no, that's not a good idea, a lot of maintenance, don't go that route, and so we said, absolutely, we'll take you up on your suggestion and move on. So we moved away from the fountain, but we still stayed with our bronze sculpture idea because we are kind of known for our bronze sculptures. We have over 30 bronze sculptures in our community and many of which are original pieces. And from a tourism perspective, we get a lot of traffic in the chamber, we're working on a brochure right now to showcase those bronze statues because get a lot of people in town. In fact, I just had somebody come in today that has some business people coming into the community and wanted that information. So we looked at bronze statues, we talked to Tim Emmert and he said that he really encouraged us to have a bronze statue that would have a component with children in it. The money that he uses for the bronze statues comes from Lucille Gibson Thompson's Trust and she loved children, so he really encouraged us to go that route. He also encouraged us to go with a patriotic theme because we are Independence after all. So we took his advice and Brandy Reyes with Commercial Bank is on our Pride Committee and threw her hand up in the air and said, in fact, she's here tonight, threw her hand up in the air, throw your hand up, Brandy. Up high, girl. So she should, she gets all the credit for what you're about to see in just a little bit. But, you know, she started searching on the internet for exactly what Tim was looking for, she reached out to a sculptor in particular, started a relationship with this gentleman, and before we knew it, the ball was rolling and we've got a statue picked out. So I'm really excited about that. I do want to tell you that the statue that you will be seeing also reflects diversity. We wanted to have children in there, but we also wanted to have children from diverse backgrounds, gender, cultural diversity. And then we had a meeting most recently and one of the members said, what about physical diversity? What about a child in a wheelchair? And we went back, not we, Brandy went back to the sculptor and the sculptor said, absolutely, we can do that and incorporate a fifth child into the bronze statue and it will be in a wheelchair. So we're thrilled about that. And so I want to tell you that we have some partners with our Pride organization that will help us with what we're doing. I don't know if you know, but now not only are we a Pride Committee, but we're a Kansas Pride Committee. And what that means is we're affiliated with the Kansas Extension and Research Department through the Extension and the Department of Commerce, and also we're affiliated with the Kansas Masons. In 2016, the Kansas Masons gave over, gave a million dollars to the State of Kansas Pride Program. And so with that, we have invited our Kansas, our Independence Masons to our meetings and they have started coming and are very interested in helping us pursue our efforts with the park as well. So we have the Masonic Lodge in Independence, we have the Chamber of Commerce, we'll also be inviting the Diversity Task Force to our group. I'm speaking to Main Street next week and talking to them about this as well and bringing them into the fold. I've spoke to the Park Board and they have unanimously given their blessing and voted to support the program. And we've talked to Rusty Baker and Bill Coflish and they have both volunteered to oversee some mason work if we need any mason work on the property. Ike Dai, who's in charge of the trustees, has been, is willing to help us with some labor. April Nutt is checking with some individuals regarding getting some rock from maybe some demolition that's going on in the community, some sandstone that we'll be able to use. And with that, I'm ready to show you some information. So, just want to take one of those, that's yours. So what, let's go through the bronze sculptures so I can show you what we're talking about. I wish I would have brought slides for you, but the first picture with the two little kids right there and the flag, that one, those kids are small. The bronze statue that you're going to be, that we are purchasing for our community will have children that are life-size, so about four feet tall, so there'll be five kids. We will be putting a bronze flagpole in there as well. We hope that it will be lighted at night and everyone will be able to see the beautiful statue 24 hours a day. On that front page, that's just an example of one of the things that Brandy found when she was first looking for things that would match up with Tim's request. So the second page like wows you because it's amazing. It has four kids, you'll see they're all together and then those three that are putting up the flag and a couple standing there. That one is a custom piece and it's a half million dollars, okay? So just to, yeah, so isn't it cool though? So flip to the third page, don't freak out. Flip to the third page, that's the same, the same shot there of those kids, but they're kind of in different positioning. So the next page you'll see Randolph Rose Collection, that is the sculptor, Jordan Rose that Brandy has been communicating with, and he's from New York and his family is in the sculptor business. And I'm just excited to let you know that Tim Emmert, when we talked to him, said, go for it, love your idea, and picked up the phone and is talking to Jordan himself, and he is moving forward on the sculptor, on the sculpture. And the Lucille Gibson Trust Fund will be paying for the sculpture. And, and it's not a half million dollar sculpture, it's, you know, but it's different, we're scaling ours down. So let's keep going. So go to the page with the four little kids there holding hands. Those are the children that will be remolded somewhat, their hands will be dropped, so they will not be holding hands, their heads will be up as if they're looking at the flagpole and their hand, one of their hands will be over their heart. So, and one of the children will be saluting and then there'll be a fifth child that will be in there as well. So the next page you'll see them just on their own, these are the pictures of the kids and then the information about the Randolph Collection. What's cool about this is it'll be an original piece, so Independence will have an original piece, it will be called Celebrating Diversity, will be the title of the piece. And, and like I said, Tim has already put a deposit down on this statue, so if something happens and we don't put it there, we will be putting it somewhere in the community. So we're, we went ahead and moved forward on the purchase of that. So a big, huge thank you to Tim for helping us with that and the funds from Lucille. I know Lucille, I knew Lucille personally and I think she would be very, very pleased. The next set of papers is the landscaping, and so you'll see just some ideas. They go from the simplest to the most elaborate. So we talked about trees and benches, we did away with the bench idea, more trees and some stone, then you'll see a lot of grasses, perennials, more grasses and perennials that could be put up to kind of separate built-like real estate there and then the house on the other side. You can just keep flipping through there and you'll see that at one point there was kind of a walkway that was built through there, that was kind of when we were talking about fountains. There's an example of a statue that's in some of the pictures, there's also a little wall there that you can see of stone. And these last two will be the ones that we're kind of working with. So there might be that area where there's the stonework on that second to last one with the statue and possibly see that circle piece at the bottom there, that might be where we put the statues.
This one?
Yes. So again, Twyla gave us all kinds of really great options, but, you know, cost is a factor and we want to definitely do something that is low, low maintenance right there and that will really showcase the bronze sculptures as people pass by there. So my, my request is, the Pride Committee is asking for permission to move forward on fundraising efforts to landscape the area at the northwest corner of Penn and Chestnut and for permission to place a bronze statue on the property as well.
That one picture, just to comment, that one picture of the kids that we're looking at from the back, that one has the backpack on it, that is pretty cool. That's real cool.
And I'll leave behind a set of papers if anyone in the audience would like to look at these after the commission meeting, I'll leave them over here.
So you're gonna have a flagpole also with the kids standing around it?
Yes, much like the, the piece that you saw with the seven kids that were in there, we'll take the four and position them in such a way that the bronze pole will be there and they'll all be looking up at the pole and we'll have it lighted at night so that we don't have to take it up and down. If something happens and we're not able to, to do that, when they take the flag down at Memorial Hall, possibly they could take ours down too and then, but maybe that one's lit too, I'm not sure, but, but yes, it will be incorporated into the statue.
Okay.
Nice, I like it.
Thank you.
This is, you know, it'll make it a really nice welcome, you get the, the overpass banner project done, you get this done, people come into town, they'll, they'll stop.
Yeah.
With their dog.
With their dog, with their dog, that's right, that's right. I think this is good, Lisa, I think this is good. And so your planning continues and you'll decide what, which plan you're gonna go with, is that, and then...
Sure, what we're going to do is if you allow us to move forward with fundraising efforts to pursue this, then we'll start talking about landscaping ideas and getting a price for that landscaping, getting it approved with Barb and make sure that she agrees with what we're thinking about putting in because she'll be maintaining that. And then we'll start the fundraising efforts, the statue's paid for, so.
Okay. Questions?
No, great idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Thank you.
This is wonderful, this is really good.
Fantastic.
So then I'd entertain a motion then that we allow the Pride Committee to begin their planning efforts for the northwest corner of Penn and Chestnut Street, and I would make that motion, so don't have to go through that again.
I'll second, although they've been planning for a year, so they're not really beginning their planning, but continuing with their planning.
Continue with their planning.
Yes.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks for the, to the committee, all those people involved.
Yes, and there's some in the room too. Joanne and Barb and Brandy and Josh and Eric. Did I miss anybody?
Okay, all right, next is the library budget. Tom?
Thanks for having us here this evening and presenting our request officially for the library. We're not asking for any increase in the mill levy or any additional funding, just to renew the funding that we received. That is about a 4.764 mill levy for the library's operations and then an additional $25,000 for small repairs that are needed to the buildings during the year. And Jerry Hopkins is here too, is the librarian for the city, and I'd entertain any questions you might have about the budget or about our procedures, but that's pretty much all that I have.
So you're basically asking the same contribution revenue-wise from the city as what's...
Right, that was there last year.
What we provided for in the past.
Yes.
So that's gonna be adequate?
And then?
I think so, you know, it's, we've, we've discussed and we've visited with the school district for additional funding to possibly stay open on Saturday and they didn't approve that additional increase in the funding.
They did not?
No, they did not.
So there's no plans to be open on Saturday?
There isn't right now. No, we're gonna have to increase the funding somehow or change some of the structure somehow to get Saturdays open.
Okay, all right. So you've already published this, I mean, this is...
No, we've, the board's approved.
Your board's approved, that's what I meant, basically.
Yeah.
All right, okay, questions?
No, not about the budget.
Okay, any questions? Okay, entertain a motion then, we approve the 2018 library budget. Would there be a motion?
Kind of approve it as part of, when you do your budget process, don't you?
Yeah, do we even need to approve it?
Proposed, well it says, consider the proposal, the proposed budget.
Yeah, it's kind of for information and then you actually approve it when you adopt your budget.
Okay. When we adopt our budget.
And I, I'm not sure which copy you have, I can't see that up there.
Why not?
Getting a little older.
That's right here.
Are you getting old, Mike?
I am, I am. So on the district funding that's stated in there, I talked to Jerry today, when she put this budget together, it had the increase of the quarter percent mill levy from USD 446. So I would suggest even if it, it is part of the process to approve it, I would not approve this budget as it's presented tonight, it needs to be amended first.
Generally, you approve it when you do your, your budget.
Okay.
Would we need to approve our 25,000 contribution at this time?
You could.
Yeah, you can do that and agree with the...
I think that's what we've done in the past, I was trying to remember what we've done in the past.
But you'll have some other groups coming to you as well requesting budgeted funds that will be actually considered when you finalize your budget.
Okay, so would you make a motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue with our additional funding of 25,000 dollars for the year 2018.
I'll second.
Okay, been moved and seconded, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks a lot.
Is this the time we need to talk about Hungry Hippo?
You know, we could talk about Hungry Hippo.
You should.
Where's, where's Jerry? We, well we can talk about that now, so we wanna participate, and we are, we are committing Gary. Aren't we?
Sure. I'll do it if the county commissioners will do it, how about that?
There you go.
And possibly some city department heads.
Yeah.
What do you think of that? Where's Terry?
I see Barb shaking her head no.
Well, you might consider, now see, David could do it, Jerry, he's in shape, he could...
Oh, I'll do that job then.
No, that's my job.
I will, I will agree to, I will agree to be on the team if the newspaper will also enter a team.
There you go. Josh, you, Amanda, and McBride.
Yeah, has to be.
Yeah, has to be Steve.
Has to be him.
One of us is Ben Gay.
See, Jerry, we're trying to help you out here.
Are you gonna include the county commissioner?
Yeah, county commissioner, they can get in there. Get Larry McManus down there. He may have, they may have to recruit somebody. Fred. Okay. There we go.
So we're doing it, huh? We don't need to take action, I know, but you guys are serious?
I did. Listen, no scooters are fun.
I'll take your word for it.
So where will you do it at, Jerry?
We're gonna do it on the ground floor of the library. And then we're gonna have the people that wanna watch it for a dollar, they can stand on the gallery if you want.
That should be more than a dollar.
Okay. All right, so there we go.
They'll be placing odds on the winning team. I guess we can't if Jerry's there.
I was gonna say, wait a minute, yeah.
We know we'll win.
Bring it home.
There you go. Okay, I think we're ready to move after the Hungry Hippo deal. So we gotta go home and start doing pushups and stuff just so you get up off the floor, right? So consider modifying stop signs between Tenth Street and Penn Avenue, Oak Street to Park Boulevard. Jerry?
We've had a number of complaints about people wanting stop signs installed over the last few months. And if you recall last, I think it was last summer, we spoke and you guys approved putting in some stop signs at another intersection, like it was down on Cypress and Eighth. Can't remember for sure where we did that at. But anyways, these requests keep coming in piecemeal. And so after getting a number of them, we just, I thought we might as well just go ahead and move forward with some kind of, of a plan that addresses the whole area. And that whole area really is fairly uncontrolled. It's a 30 mile an hour area. It's just adjacent to the high school there. So as you can see, I believe the one that you're looking at right there is how it sits right now. So I don't, I don't know if you've had a chance to look that over thoroughly or not, but that is what it looks like right now. There should be, should be another, do you have the, there we go. Now, that's, that's the one that is proposed. That allows for the north-south traffic to flow through the whole area and the east-west traffic to be stopped. That gives the, gives it consistency. It matches the area around it, but it gives it consistency so that, you know, you, you are stopping and starting where you expect to stop and start instead of people that don't know the area coming in there and running a stop sign and getting in a collision. It removes all the four-way stops. It takes, it removes some other stop signs and then it replaces them. But this controls every intersection in that area. And if you go to the last slide, the green stop signs, I tried to color code it to make it a little more clear. The green stop signs would be new stop signs. The orange stop signs are what is there now and are being removed, so those could be repositioned and reused. And then the red stop signs are ones that are already there now that will remain there, I believe. So went through and figured it out. We'd only have to buy 11 new stop signs to do this. I talked with Mike Vassour about that. That was one of his big concerns. So, and he and I and David Cowan have looked this over and collaborated on it.
We didn't have anything in the budget for new signs this year, did we? In the street department? We talked, one time we saw a budget item for replacing some of the signs because of the data, the reflectiveness. But I, I looked back at the budget to see if there was?
They just kinda have usually a general maintenance amount that they have every year that they probably?
Yeah, I didn't see that in the budget. That's what I was wondering, where, you know, if we didn't have money budgeted for it, if this would be combined with the traffic sign replacement that we're obligated to do or, you know, how are we going to get the funds? Something's not gonna get done that was in the budget for, seemed like we got a lot of those coming up that, we've had a lot of expenses that weren't planned. So I wasn't for sure where we were.
These stop signs are, the stop sign is $25 apiece. We talked about it in staff meeting today with Mike, 'cause we're coming in a couple of weeks on the other thing, and he has the budget to take care of that. When we get into some of the other signs, they are expensive. They run hundreds to $200, but a stop sign is $25.97 apiece. So Mike felt comfortable that he could absorb this and was in very much in agreement with Jerry of this would help some issues there.
And 25 bucks times 11 is not much for increased safety of all the cars.
That sounds like a good investment.
And again, it addresses a number of, a number of complaints that I've been getting consistently over the last several months. So if I've gotten, you know, these complaints that I've gotten, I imagine there's a whole lot more people there that are concerned but aren't saying anything. And we have had some collisions in that area. We had a rollover just up north of there, was that in January? Yeah, so.
Okay.
That's why I was gonna email on the cost of those today, but I was out all day at the office and didn't get a chance, 'cause I know some of them are expensive and without the, the cost for 11 signs, I didn't wanna go, you know, looking at $2,000 of signs when we gotta do replacements anyway. It'd be ideal to put it in a, a budget that we know we're staying in line, because there's a lot of things this past year and even coming into this that hasn't been in the budget. And I know 2,000 or 3,000 here isn't much, but when you do that enough, the bottom line of that 2,000 gets pretty significant. But, you know, $25 a sign isn't, you know, we're looking?
Yeah. About 275 bucks, less than 300 bucks. Okay. And this, I think this'll, just looking at this, this'll increase, I mean, this'll be much safer and it'll help traffic, I think, too, especially around the high school there.
It will, and it'll stop, you know, when the, the high school students are driving through that area, it will stop them east and west. And the bulk of the complaints that we get are related to the school traffic.
Right.
And in the east-west direction?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. The only exception to that would be a complaint on Irving Street, that I've only had, I've had one speeding complaint there, but I get speeding, I, there's probably not a block in town that I don't get speeding complaints on, it's, that's constant.
When you leave 10th Street and wanna go to Penn Avenue and get, bypass all the congestion at 10th and Oak, those east-west streets, not that I speed when I'm doing it, you know, not that I'm in a hurry, but.
What do you say?
We just ask that you stop for any stop signs that may or may not be installed.
Bicycle.
Okay.
No, it's not, it's not a long enough drive in there to open up the Hemi, so.
Yeah.
I will appreciate the north-south streets, so.
So we need a motion then to approve these changes?
Yeah, and the Park Boulevard should be Park Street.
Okay.
Not Park Boulevard.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion then that we modify, per the plan, the existing traffic structure with the stop signs. Would there be a motion to that effect?
Not sure how we wanna word it.
That's good right there.
That's good, okay. Then I, so move.
Second. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, sir.
Item O, consider establishing a potential funding source by applying for KDH-E loan for improvements to the sanitary sewer system.
At the last meeting, Commissioner Kavish asked about if we could apply some of the remaining funds from the original loan that we currently have to some of our other projects, but there's not enough funds, approximately 250,000, that aren't committed, so that's not enough to do the projects that we have planned. The proposed projects, the Basin Five and Lakeside Lift Station, you see there, the engineering's already been done and it's already been approved by KDOT, or KDH-E. So those projects are actually kinda ready to go if we're, you know, have the funding to do them. We do need to get our project list in by June 1st. We talked about that on the water treatment plant too, so that they can make sure and allocate, kind of reserve those funds for the city of Independence in case they do want to do that. If you would like to proceed on that, then the next action would be to set a date for a public hearing, just the same exact process that we did on the water treatment plant.
And it has to be done by June 1?
Well, the projects have to be submitted to KDH-E by June 1st. The, the public hearing doesn't have to be, 'cause the other one we're having, on the other ones, I think, is June 8th.
Okay.
But we have to submit the application with the projects and then they will set aside that money and then we'll set the public hearing, you set the public hearing now too, but the public hearing's not, it has to be published 30 days ahead of time. So I think last time we set it two months in advance.
Okay. So the 246,000 that's left from the first loan, loan number one, can it be added to loan number two or is that two separate?
Well, loan number two, you would just, you still have your first loan, you just can't borrow anymore from it.
Against it, but you can apply it to those other projects, is my question, I guess.
The 250?
Yeah.
Not, not my understanding.
I don't think so.
Yes, I think they're just gonna close that loan out. Now, we could go in on the second loan and say we want it for, you know, basically $3.1 million as opposed to 3, 3,946.
Okay.
We can do that. But I think somewhere in there, we'd have to have a project in there to identify it with.
They'll, they'll adjust the amortization schedule based on the fact that we didn't utilize those funds. I believe that's what they've done in the past.
Okay.
So our loan would be almost $7 million. How much have we paid off on the $4 million loan?
It's, it's just a little bit over $2 million right now, what's remaining to be paid on it.
From the original loan?
Yeah.
From the original loan?
Yeah. That's, I sent an email and I didn't get a chance, you know, I've been gone today asking some questions that would kind of relate to where we're gonna be in the end instead of looking at, at each piece. I think particularly when we're looking at the rate study, you know, how this all adds up that, in our total, where we would be then is a little over 5 million?
It, you know, why don't we look at that and I can address, did you send the email?
I, I thought yesterday.
I think you sent one about, asking about the balance and I forwarded it to you.
Okay. I hadn't seen that, but we can certainly get those numbers together, so I provide you with accurate information on that.
As we're looking at?
Because we do have some adjustments in some of these numbers that, through those loan balances, that aren't reflected in there, so I need to update those figures once we get that all adjusted. This just is the remaining part that's not committed. So the other pieces are still moving a little bit. There's some advances that are still occurring.
These are the low-interest loans that we've accessed, well, obviously we accessed them for the other, the party lives.
How that's gonna impact our, our rates, you know, where we're looking at water sewer and, and, you know, from just the information we've, we've seen, it's still kinda confusing where, you know, the one notice we didn't know for making money or losing, but yet then we discussed the sewer plant, looks like it is making money. So, you know, just how does, how does an additional loan, do we wanna do all of them or can we do part?
Well, and you only have to, you don't have to borrow all of it. I mean, if you don't want to, you're just establishing that.
So it's kind of a letter of credit?
It's revolving loan.
Yeah.
It's not a commitment to do these.
We don't.
There's no commitment.
You're basically saying you're intending to do them, and then if you do do them, then you're gonna have the revenue to pay the money back through, you know, your revenue sources through these enterprise funds.
Yeah. So another Basin Five, that's what, 80% of the wastewater in the town goes through that section?
Yeah, that was our worst basin, and we've made a lot of improvements in it, 'cause we've already done about a million dollars worth of work in that basin, but this, it needs about another million dollars worth of work.
And Lakeside Lift Station has had a history of problems. Those two are really critical.
Yes, and, and they're ready to go. They're ready to go. So this would just give us the authority to be able to utilize those funds.
And we're not charged interest until actually we draw down?
Right.
On the loan, so.
That's great.
Just trying to get the full picture. We're, we're gonna commit to?
I think we can go through the process and then we can make, make the decisions as we have more information. So.
One thing, as we cut our I and I, we're gonna cut our cost of operating sewer treatment plant.
Oh, yeah. That's really gonna be helpful.
Plus the potential for fines when we exceed our, no, we're gonna keep our money here.
Yeah. We're suggesting July 13th at 5:30.
Do you have a proposed date? 'Cause I didn't see one on July.
Well, July 13th.
Okay.
At 5:30 for the public hearing and then authorize staff to submit the application.
Okay.
I think it's a great plan.
So then, other questions? No. Jerry? Okay. So then, entertain a motion that we set hearing date of July 13th and authorize staff, I'll make this motion, that we set the hearing date of July 13th, 2017, for the low-interest rate loan from KDHE and give staff the, the permission?
Authorization to submit an application for these projects that are listed in the proposed.
There you go. And allow staff to submit the application for the projects that are listed. Which total, 3,946, though? Okay. We good? That one? All right. Would there be a second then?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Fantastic.
Fantastic, that's good. All right, report on city projects and other updates.
There's lots of minutes in your packet to read, so you can read those tonight. You go to bed.
Read them last night.
Can't sleep when you read them.
And then go to sleep, yeah.
I just wanted to report on this one. We didn't bring this to you guys to set the date to receive bids because we needed to move on this project. We brought it to you in February stating that we didn't wanna lose the funding, we were worried about that, and they didn't wanna miss the contract season. So we're receiving these bids on June 8th. They are on the website if you wanna download the specifications. And then we'll bring it back to you for approval on that. And this is, this could be quite a project. Penn Avenue cleared from Chestnut to Oak.
Okay. All right.
And then we have the update on Penn Avenue repairs, south of Laurel Street, and David helped me out and he took a nice picture for me in the rain.
See, there it is. It was that.
So that is done and Commissioner Kavish confirmed to me that it's a very smooth surface and the transition is good, so.
Even circled the block.
He tried it out.
Go through it twice.
Yeah, he tried it out, he tried it out with his Hemi, so. So that's pretty much done. And then we got a grant for the Jet A self-serve fuel. A lot of people are gonna go, what the heck is that? Well, we have avgas out there, we have self-serve, so that they can get their own fuel in the avgas, which is the, the single-engine planes. But the jets, we, the jets, they always have to call staff in or whatever if we're not open and they have to do it. Well, this is gonna allow Jet A self-serve 24/7. And it will be a big deal to those, those people that have jets, that don't have to wait on us to get their fuel. So, it's really a pretty good deal, because a $35,000 project is only gonna cost the city 5250.
Yeah.
So, and Mike Conway really helped us out on getting this grant as well, and Matt Jacobs. And so, we were pretty excited to get this. This is something we've talked about for years.
Great news.
It is great news.
And with the rainy weather, just wanna remind everybody where their storm shelters are. Montgomery County Judicial Center, the high school gym, and here at the Civic Center in temporary city hall. And you can bring your pets on a leash to ours. I don't know that the county would appreciate it, but we allow it at the city.
What about the, the weather film that we had produced two or three years ago?
The Storm?
The Storm?
Yes, it's running, it's on our, actually, there's a banner on our website that has actually the same theme. Joanne did these for us. And if you click on it, it goes to that, and also it plays in the cycle on the Channel 12 cable station. It's in the rotation. We did redo it last year and changed Harry's voice to David's, since after Harry retired, but other than that, we were able to still use most of it. So yes, we're still utilizing that.
Good. Okay. Very good. Well, we certainly have had enough rain.
Yes.
And luckily, we haven't had-
And the citizens are calling us and telling us we've had enough rain. Because we are having some flooding in some areas.
Okay. Commission comments? Gary?
Since Dave Cowan is still in the room, I, I would just like to ask you, Dave, about the city inspections that we've started for the downtown buildings, the safety inspections. I know you've done a bunch. Can you just brief me on that quickly?
Yes, Commissioner. April sent out the initial letters, and we got some response back. Those have, inspections have been done, and we've received no further correspondence from the other owners, and we have not received any registration of vacant buildings. So at this time, the building inspector is beginning the process of contacting those owners, and we will be setting up dates to do the inspections. And we expect to hopefully start getting those scheduled in June.
Do you know roughly what percentage have been inspected?
It's not a large percentage. I would say somewhere between 5 to 10.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah. It's not a very big number that it's called in at this point.
So no major problems at this point?
No, they haven't reported any really major issues.
I'm guessing the people that jumped in and volunteered to have their buildings inspected first were certain they would have no-
Right.
-major issues.
Yeah. I mean, there's been a few things, but just things, lot of interest in that project April has going and stuff, and so it's going well, but now we'll start making contact.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Appreciate that. That's all I asked, had, Fred.
No, I didn't have any. Only comments I would have is that we're excited to have Craig Whitehead as our new city manager, and as we had stated earlier, he'll be here July, or June 8th.